I'm going to call the city council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon?
Here.
Council Pitts?
Here.
Council Mo?
Here.
Council Rodley?
Here.
There.
Here.
Council Woodrow? And Council Pictionary?
I'm here, thank you.
Okay, so do you guys have any idea on the echo that we're currently hearing? Do you need a, do you need a second?
Just got it.
It's very dramatic.
Yes.
All right, we're expecting Council Woodrow anytime here. We have one item tonight, which is a bike share update with Emma Newman, so I will turn it over to Emma.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. It's a pleasure to be before you to discuss bike share again this evening. The topic of discussion is to discuss whether or not to direct staff to pursue grant funding and partner with Cascadia Mobility, the City of Eugene, and other regional partners to further expand bike share in Springfield. As some of you will recall who were on council at the time, the last time we discussed this item was in February 2020 during a work session, and shortly after that, everything changed in March of 2020 with COVID impacting our community. At that time, city council expressed interest in expanding bike share in the Springfield community and requested more details. Detailed out in your council briefing memo, attachment one, are a number of changes that have happened since essentially COVID had numerous different impacts. At that time, we had been talking with Jump, which was the operations provider at that point owned by Uber. Shortly after the pandemic, they pulled out of operating Peace Health Rides, our local bike share system. City of Eugene covered operations for a period of time, and then Cascadia Mobility is a nonprofit that has been operating the Peace Health Rides Bike Share System since April 2021. So what we're looking at as a, as the opportunity before us this evening is the ability to partner with Cascadia Mobility, the operator of the Peace Health Rides Bike Share System, to expand further into Springfield. There's currently some bikes up at the Riverbend Hospital, but other than that, people who ride Peace Health Rides cannot lock up and leave bikes in Springfield without a penalty right now. People are currently riding in the city, and one of your questions last time was asking where are people riding? So in the question and answer document that's been updated, it shows that and a number of other answers to questions that have come in from you and have been part of the conversation since. So the opportunity consists of a number of different things. One is that the Cascadia Mobility nonprofit has received 220 donated bicycles. So we could use 100 of these, potentially more if we wanted, but the current proposal is to use 100 in Springfield. These bikes do need to be refurbished since they had been used on the Nike campus up in the Beaverton area. And so ODOT, the Oregon Department of Transportation, is supportive of funding the refurbishment of these bikes. The mayor also has supported Cascadia Mobility with requesting an Oregon Health Authority grant. So this grant application that we're currently awaiting the news on would both expand, support expansion of bike share in Springfield, as well as provide free low-income passes to members in the bike share system and provide additional education such as Learn to Ride workshops. Another piece is that Peace Health, the title sponsor of the bike share system, has said that they would increase their sponsorship if match funds could be secured to fill the funding gap. Another change is that our transportation options program, which focuses on reducing drive-alone trips in the region, has significantly been restructured over the last couple of years due to layoffs because of the pandemic. We are about to have a new transportation option specialist staff person start in April, who would have capacity to work on launching bike share as well as another, other related topics. So there's staffing capacity that exists in a way that did not when we last had this conversation two years ago. One other thing to note is that the city of Springfield is part of a grant for regional bicycle enhancement upgrades. And one aspect of that is funding to provide bike parking upgrades throughout the community. There is an opportunity for the bike parking upgrades, so installing new bike racks to both serve the needs of people using their personal bikes, as well as they could duplicate as hub locations for a bike share system. So it'd be a way to have a lower cost investment, but have mutual benefit for both bike share system users as well as people riding their own personal bikes. I will note that during the pandemic and still currently, it is quite challenging to purchase personal bicycles. So the need for a shared bike share system has likely increased. There's been supply chain issues, turnover in our local bike shops, and a number of impacts along those lines. So the need is to fill the missing operational funding gap. We're talking about $100,000 per year, because about $100, or $1,000 per bike per year. So if it's 100 bikes, that equates to $100,000 per year. I see a number of ways that this could be covered primarily with grant funds. There is the surface or statewide transportation improvement funding that flows through Lane Transit District. That is going to be increasing in funding. There's more infrastructure investment and Jobs Act funding from the federal government. So there's a number of transportation-related grant sources that the city could pursue to fill this funding gap. We may need to provide maybe a 10% local match, but it'd be a really minimal city-specific local dollar investment to leverage these other grant funds that would then leverage all of this partnering opportunity and everything that I just described. So before I turn over to you for questions and discussion, I just wanted to let you know that the second attachment in your packet this evening is that Q and A document. It has been updated since last time, and we also have staff here from Cascadia Mobility, the Peace Health Rides operator, and City of Eugene, in case there are questions that you have for me that are really better answered by those individuals. And so I'd like to bring your attention to the attachment one, page three of three, next steps and recommended action. So if council is supportive, the next steps that we're recommending is to assign bike share expansion to the transportation options specialist work program to work with partners to develop recommendations for criteria of the details around citing bike share hub locations, determining the geographic extent of the service area, and other details such as bike rack maintenance, et cetera. Tonight, we'll really focus on the bigger picture, and those would be details that we come back to you and kind of would develop going forward if there is direction from council to pursue this opportunity. The third piece would be to pursue additional grant funding. This could include submitting a stiff grant application later this year. And as I said, kind of on the order of $100,000 per year for 100 bikes in Springfield. And then we provide periodic updates to council. So based on the prior, previous council interest in expanding bike share and the current opportunity, staff are recommending to pursue this. And with that, I will turn it over to all of you for discussion and questions. Thank you.
Joe?
I thank you. I'm not sure exactly what the impression I gave last time in regards to encouraging this forward movement, but I have not been in favor of this program in a sense that there's, to me, there's a lot of unknowns. We don't know, you're talking about $100,000. We don't know, you're talking about the possibility grants. We don't know if we have grants. You're talking about, it could be only a 10% match, but we don't know if there's going to be a 10% match. And then once we start this program, where's the off-ramp as opposed to if we, you know, can you say, yeah, we will definitely get grants here into perpetuity, and we're not going to have this type of investment each year to be faced with the bill. And, and frankly, when I'm looking at the bike racks throughout Eugene, I don't see those emptied, and I see a ton of them around. They just seem to sit idle, but I'm still not convinced this program would work here and to use a reason as far as the supply and demand, because we can't, people can't buy bikes, otherwise they would. I, I, I don't see any supporting documentation for that. So again, I, it's great if people want a bike, and we're spending lots of dollars to make way for bikes on roads that are paid for by vehicle taxes. But I'm not, I'm not supportive of investing Springfield tax dollars into a program that have yet to prove in my mind it would be worth the investment.
Leonard? Is, I guess I'm directing this to Emma. Emma, is there any kind of statistics about the percentage of usage of the bikes in the Eugene program?
That's a great question. I knew some of the statistics kind of pre-pandemic, but I'd like to turn it over to Brody to share the more recent usage information, please. And Brody Hilton is the director of Cascadia Mobility.
Yeah, thanks, Emma. Hello, Mayor and councilors. You know, our pre-pandemic levels of utilization, we think of trips in terms of per bike per day. And in peak periods, that for us is the shoulder spring, you know, April, May, June, and through the summer, and in particular, September, October.
Can you hang on a second? I don't know if you're in a place, but it would be really helpful if you could toggle on your camera. If you're in a place, you could do that.
He can't. Here we go. I don't think I had the option, and now I do. Can you see me?
Yes, we can see you.
All right, hello.
Oh, go ahead.
Right, and so peak periods, I would say, are trips per bike per day are on the order of three. During these winter months, it's between, you know, one and one and a half trips per bike per day. All that is to say, we, you know, somewhere around 150,000 trips is what we're experiencing during the pandemic in Eugene, and I suspect those numbers will, will increase back to pre-pandemic levels, which is up around 200,000 trips per year on 300 bikes in Eugene.
Is there any projection about what the usage would be in Springfield?
Um, that's a good question, but I would suspect, I don't think we've done any deep analysis there, but, you know, we're talking about serving the center core of Springfield and connecting the two communities. So the hope and expectation is that we're talking about trips to and from Eugene as well as in the, in the central core of Springfield. I estimate it'll be right on par with Eugene, around two, two trips per bike per day, something like that.
Okay, to the financing piece, do we have any idea how, how likely it is that we would be getting a partner so that we wouldn't have to foot the entire bill on this?
Yes, so the latest that we have from Peace Health, and Brody, feel free to add to what I'm saying, was communication that they're interested in expanding their existing sponsorship if we do add 100 new bikes to the system and expand the service. That being said, we do need to still fund, fill the funding gap, but that funding gap could be, I feel fairly confident that the funding gap could be filled with grant funds.
Yeah, well, with, with that said, I, I would definitely be willing to sign on to this program, provided that we're not, that, that we're getting the, the kind of financing that we're talking about, and I, I would hope that if we, if, if some of the funding falls through, where we're actually having to foot more of the bill than is currently projected, that you would come back to us. But with, with that said, I thoroughly support this program. I think it's a very, it's a very good one, and I think it is something that would help the public.
Steve?
Gas prices going up, I think it'd be more attractive to people. A lot of people say Springfielders may not be reluctant to ride bicycles. Well, these aren't available to them, so I'd like to see this program go out there and that people get used to it. I believe they'll start using it. So I support it.
Damian?
Hey, y'all. So I guess my concerns are safeties. You know, there's been a lot of backlash as far as different things going on along the street. And so like, I'm not a bike rider, so I'm curious if we would have more, what would be done to increase the, the safety and mitigate the risk for these people on bikes and to, I wonder if things, you know, for example, like the new streetlights and, I mean, the new bulbs, whatever they are, as well as other things, have those been considered as far as a way to keep more bikers safe? Like, are these part of, you know, things that would make this more attractive and more longstanding, things that are already going on within the city? I mean, it, does this help or is it a deterrent? Have those things been considered?
Yes, great question. So a few things that support with safety is that in the regional bicycle enhancement grant that I mentioned, there is some funding for bike safety education classes. Cascadia Mobility with the Oregon Health Authority Grant is seeking funds to do more Learn to Ride education as well. So there's both the built infrastructure, but there's the educational and encouragement aspects that both the city and Cascadia can partner on to make sure that people who do want to ride have access to information on how to do so safely. The city has also been actively working to fill in gaps in the bicycle infrastructure system to improve the street lighting, as you mentioned. So with those infrastructure improvements, there is becoming a more and more connected network of bikeways in the city. And we've also provided some wayfinding signage that helps people navigate the system. That being said, there are still gaps in the system, and in cities where bike share has launched, sometimes it leads to more people riding, and then those cities deciding to invest further in filling in those gaps to respond to the increased demand. Brody, do you have anything that you'd like to share with regards to education, safety, kind of Cascadia's role in this?
Yeah, certainly, safety is like first and foremost in everything we do, and we want to make sure all riders are safe. Bike share, you know, worldwide has proven to be incredibly safe. And, and as Emma alluded to, it sort of obligates and necessitates safer infrastructure, and there's nothing safer than safety in numbers. All of the bikes are very well-lit, automated, built-in lighting, front and rear at night. And just to speak to the track record of Peace Health Rides in Eugene, Shane may know more than I, but from my recollection, there haven't been any serious incidents reported that I'm aware of in the four years that we've been operating the program.
Damian, did you have anything else?
Yes, another question came up. So we talked about the education piece. I'm just curious how that is going to be delivered? And are there going to be alternate methods? You know, thinking about the digital divide and, you know, I'm thinking that there's a probably a correlation between those who would need an alternate or, or bikes would be their primary form of transportation and the, and accessibility to this type of information. So just curious how these information platforms are going to be rolled out? Are there going to be alternate means outside of internet-based learning?
Right, so do you want me to take that one, Emma?
Please, why don't you leave it and then I'll channel it with a little extra?
Sure, so, you know, first of all, Springfield has the opportunity to really just tag on to the program that's already in place. So all of our information that you can find at peacehealthrides.com. That's the website and would remain the website for enrollment in the program as well as the app. There's a Peace Health Rides app. When you download the app, you walk through safety messaging and how to, how to, how to ride safely, how to use the program. To speak to the digital divide piece, Unlock is available with an RFID card, so a smartphone is not required. Once you do sign up for an account. And then to reach people that perhaps don't have access to technology or are low-income individuals, that's really part of the program that we've put into place called the Bike Eugene Access Plan, which offers low-income access, or sorry, discounted access for low-income individuals through partner organizations like Food for Lane County, Homes for Good, Central Latino Americano, and we're looking for other partners. Point being, that would be the focus of our Learn to Ride classes. And if we are awarded this OHA grant, would actually fund bike share to be completely free for individuals that are low-income and affiliated with local CBOs. And that would be where we incorporate our safety programming through partnership with them.
All right, Cory?
Okay, so overall, I am supportive of this, yes, and some things. One, I just think about Springfield as the, as a location that is not like Eugene in that we are long and narrow, and everything is not as round as it is in Eugene where people can get to places. So if I was in charge of the world, I would want to think about maybe a pilot version of this, which is, you know, in the, in the closer sort of center of Springfield that might interact more with Eugene and maybe going to some key areas. It's hard for me to imagine us just going live with this and people riding all the way out to Thurston and back. I don't know, that could happen. The other thing is, as you were talking about the, you know, the, the educational programs and targeting certain populations of folks, what I would want to know is if certain populations of folks want to have bikes targeted to them, and whether or not those are the, the people who are most likely to use them. So that's the other thing is I would want to say, who, who's likely to use it? Who is using it in Eugene and who's going to be using them in Springfield? And all that is to be said is I am still very supportive of it. I would just want us to get our sort of messaging around this and our targeting, because if, if the idea is to build a program that is going to be sustainable, and it is going to, we may get initial grant funding, and then how is it going to be funded? We would want it to be successful. And so just getting really clear about who's going to be using them. Are we targeting the right people? And is there a potential for, you know, private partnerships? Is this something that, you know, say businesses, particularly those who might, you know, have bars or whatever, would be interested in having bicycles? So I think there's a way for us to think about this creatively in a, with a Springfield lens as opposed to just extending how it's being done in Eugene. The end.
All right, Joe?
Thank you, and she brought up some good points. I wanted, I kind of like to know who's been wanting this besides members of BPAC? Has citizens been coming and hitting the counters at the downtown city hall and saying, hey, I'd love to have a bike that I could borrow? Or is that literally coming from BPAC or from some bicyclist-oriented groups out of Eugene? That's one question I have. It is also, has any of the local bicycle shops, have they voiced support towards this program? Literally, and have they been actually contacted, and have they actually gone on record as voice, voicing support? Because I don't want to support anything that's going to harm our local businesses. And number two is that, number three, and it says, you know, you're talking about hubs, and you recommend a hub for every six to eight bicycles, and there's 100 bicycles being proposed here. That would be about 16 hubs, and on that list, you're, you're talking about, oh, it's going to be downtown-centric, but on that list, you're talking about the Bob Kiefer Center, which I don't think is very downtown. So I see some contradictions here that I'm not sure, you know, who's going to actually decide about those hub locations. Is it going to be a committee? Is it going to be staff? I'm not sure. So again, there's, and, and is there an off-ramp to it? So in one year, if you can't say at the end of that first year, hey, we got funding the next year and the following year and the following year, then where's our off-ramp? Do, do we have, are those bicycles come with some sort of commitment for the city on the city side? Saying, okay, well, we tried it for a year. We don't want them, take them away. Or are we committed to some sort of contractual agreement to have those for a certain length of time?
Thank you, counselor. I have several of your questions. I'm seeking, you know, if council has opinions and wants to direct this in a certain direction, that would be really helpful to hear. So who is this coming from? This had come from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and as the question around, you know, what were they proposing for a draft list of locations back in 2019? That was informed at a time when the potential opportunity on the horizon was looking more at electric assist bicycles, which tend to have a larger range. And that was just an initial starting brainstorm list. So the locations shown there are just that starting point. If council says pursue this and go forward, then we would re-engage BPAC and have more conversations, actually start looking at what would make logical sense for hub locations and service area. As you can see with the ridership shown in the same Q and A document, it looks like people are currently using the bike share bikes primarily south of Oregon 126 Expressway, west of 14th Street, and along the Middle Fork and Mill Race paths. So to Counselor Rodley's earlier point, kind of looking at that west and downtown, West Springfield downtown area could make a lot of logical sense for an initial expansion area. As far as the question regarding local bike shops, two of our bike shops have closed down during the pandemic. So they are no longer around to be voicing that local support. There is a, the Peddler has opened as the Bike Bistro in downtown Springfield, and there's the Peak Sports Bike Shop right next door. My understanding is that both of those businesses are partnering and wanting to promote bike transportation more broadly, host social events. I think there's a lot of great partnership opportunities to really have co-benefits between what bike share would have to offer and what our local businesses are providing already and what they're trying to contribute to our community. And so with regards to hubs and number of bikes, if city council has opinions as to, should it be 100 bikes? Do we want to look at less or more? That would be good information to hear from you if you have an interest in either of those, as well as the hub locations and service area. If you really want to see this, you know, start in a certain location and not extend out to Thurston, for instance, that would be really helpful input to also here.
I, I'm also wondering, as I'm hearing about this, and to Council Pictionary's point about, you know, who, who's been asking for it, I think there's an opportunity for us to do some partnering, whether it's with Willamaleine, and we would just see what people want and whether they would use it. Because I think that could help to inform what that pilot would look like, because I think I would be inclined to think, oh, yeah, maybe it starts on the, the, the west side of town and, you know, goes to Gateway maybe, and, you know, maybe it just looks like where there's sort of the, the most density. But I would also like to, and I think by doing that outreach, whether it's to the school district or the Willamaleine, by doing that outreach, I think we'll, we'll get a sense of if there's enough interest to really get this thing going. And that will also help with the launch of it. Also knowing that we maybe don't have the capacity, and there aren't like seven staff people who could do it, but also just thinking, I, I, I don't know that the six or however many of us there are, are as aware or know what, how it would be used as much as actually going out into the city and saying, would you use these bicycles? How would you use them? And generating the interest that way.
Counselor, and Mary, if I may, just for a second, I have, I've had the privilege of launch bike share programs around the country over the last 10 years, and, and something I'll say is, sort of, cities' bike share gets launched, and oftentimes the citizens don't know they want it. This isn't about bikes. It's about access. It's about public transportation, and it's about active transportation and public health and connecting all of those dots. And I think that's the opportunity here. We are deeply sensitive to any economic impacts, obviously targeting for the better. But the point is to get more people more readily to destinations they need to get to, and it's about equity. It's certainly about bike shops. If you look at the Peace Health Rides webpage, you'll see that we're highlighting all the bike shops that we have in our, are, are aware of in, in our service area and would certainly be adding Springfield bike shops. The idea is that bike share is a gateway to bike ownership or other modes of active transportation. And so we view ourselves, Cascadia Mobility, really as an extension of the municipal and transit agencies, the municipal government transit agencies. Our, our job is to make bike share a success as measured by ridership. When it comes to the revenue side, we can certainly talk about how to maximize the, the revenue. And we have some ideas there, but really for, for us, I think you don't have to worry about city staff time so much. That's, that's sort of our responsibility as a nonprofit.
So I've got, I've got a couple of questions here. So what's, what's the actual contractual relationship? So do, do, does Cascadia Mobility sign a contract with the city that outlines roles and responsibility? Is it with Eugene? Is the grant administrator? Like, what actually defines what everybody's roles and responsibilities are?
Correct. There would be an operating contract. We have a contract with the city, and Shane, if you'd like to speak to that, I see your camera come on.
Yeah, if you, if you need, I'm Shane Rhodes, City of Eugene, Transportation Options Program Manager, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions to the operations in the City of Eugene. We've been working with Cascadia Mobility. They, you know, won this contract through an RFP process, and as a nonprofit have been really incredible. And as a nonprofit have been really incredible to work with. And the contractual relationship is that we have the sponsorship funding for Peace Health. We own the bicycles and contract operations with Peace Health or with Cascadia Mobility. And, you know, they are, as Brody said, an extension of our work and the work we're doing to increase access to transportation options for people. And through partnership with the University of Oregon and Lane Transit District. You know, we are looking for funding, not only for our own Bike Share system, but regionally, what what works best for our region to provide people access and equitable access and fair access to transportation options, no matter the type, whether that's transit, Bike Share, you know, we're looking at all, all types of transportation options and accessibility. And this for us is just one of those tools that we're using.
Okay, so I think back to the core question. So if if we think about saying this is a regional, this is a sort of a a regional project, right? Would, or would we be housed under the current operating agreement that Eugene has? Or would we be sort of responsible for for negotiating our own? Like, so what, what I don't want to have happen is that I want to have, you know, clear sort of roles and responsibilities so that we know what happens if they're, you know, if they're, if we all need to take an off ramp, right? Like, you know, that that's a possibility or we, we have some sort of governance document associated to this. Is that the Eugene document or would Springfield be sort of negotiating on their own?
Well, maybe Emma can speak to this. I, I mean, I would imagine that it would be a separate contract relationship with Cascadia Mobility so that you would have that ability to shape your program. But I think that there is definitely a partnership that is involved, just like with Lane Transit District and the University of Oregon. You know, there are agreements that the University of Oregon and Cascadia Mobility, you know, have as well for operations on campus and allow, you know, virtual hubs and different systems and, you know, may work in all of the city. And so I imagine there's going to be different operations potentials in Springfield as well.
Yeah, that's how I would see it as well. And to Counselor Pictionary's earlier point, as far as duration, I think it'd be important to set up a contract and say, you know, this is what we're committing to right now. Here's our different roles. Here's the bike ownership. Currently, the bikes are owned by Cascadia Mobility. If the city wanted to own them, which I don't know that we necessarily would, we could look at that. But I think it's a good opportunity where they already own the bikes and it's just entering into, yes, we want to have this service provided in our community. And there's additional support from Cascadia, which it is their thing that they do well to enter into a Bike Share operating agreement. If council says, you know, we want to try this out for two or three years and then have an evaluation, see where things are at and discuss whether we want to pursue it further, that's an option as well. We, we can only know so much before kind of trying it out and seeing what it consists of in our community.
So the question that, when you look at page three of three, attachment one, where you, where you sort of outline what proposed next steps would be. Is that transportation operations specialist? Is that one of the roles that that gets funded over on on the LTD side?
It is funded through Lane Council of Governments with regional NPO dollars. It is a rework of what was previously point to point at LTD staff. That was housed at Lane Transit District. All of those individuals were laid off early on during the pandemic. And then a lot of the transportation options program has been kind of rehoused and re-envisioned at Lane Council of Governments. So this position is employed by AlCOG, but primarily working in Springfield on our behalf.
Okay, so the next, if if we wanted to go forward here, the next steps is we would essentially assign this work to that person and then they would sort of fully vet out what an operating plan would be. And then we would, then we could take a look at it, right?
Yes, the next step will be operating plan, starting to look at where would be logical placement of the hubs. Is the service area that's like conceptualized as kind of downtown West Springfield actually logical? Getting into those sorts of details, figuring out, okay, what are the specifics of the contracting? Do we have questions for council that we need clarification on how you want those details to be set up? But we didn't want to get too far into doing the work before coming back and saying, should we be pursuing this?
Okay. Leonard.
Well, I think Brooke is exactly right. He hit it on the head when he said that the the roll up to a project like this, the public is not always going to know what to ask for. They're not going to know that it's on the menu, so to speak. I think the wheel probably had a tough first few years before people caught on to its utility. So I would like to, I guess, what, Emma, let me give you a hypothetical. Let's say this is a dismal failure. Nobody, nobody wants any of the bikes. You sign a contract for a couple of years. At the end, the city of Springfield says this program has failed. Let's, we, we want you to come and get the bikes. They belong to Cascadia. So Cascadia would take possession of the bicycles and then the program would go away. Is that about right?
That's understanding. Yeah, if we set up the contracting that way and say, you know, awareness for this, this time period. I think three years might make sense based on the Peace Health sponsorship and some of the grant cycle durations. But, yeah, we can try it out, see how it's going and take it from there.
Good deal.
Joe.
Thank you. So, actually, I'm glad Leonard brought up that question. I have a couple others, but but you're talking about, okay, someone, we decide it doesn't work. We want to get rid of it. What I'd like to know is then who would be the person or persons that would decide it's not working? And what criteria would be used for that? And then you're talking about how they would, how would we go about doing that? Because if we go with somebody, somebody's subjective opinion saying, hey, as far as I can tell, it's working great. What criteria is working great versus failing? And then we're talking, excuse me, then we're talking about a transportation specialist. Excuse me, that I assume is Shane out of Eugene or or an unnamed person. So I don't know. You shake your head. But it's not, there's no one identified as a transportation specialist on this end. So I'd like to know who that is. Is it another person? Or is that, you know, where does that fall? And I'm also, because of Counselor Rodley's comments, we're talking about partnering up or she's talking about the idea of partnering up with Willamaleen Park and Recreation District. To me, this is a recreational activity. So where are they? They're, you know, we're not Eugene. Eugene has their own parks department. Springfield does not. So are are bikes in, and Brody, a question for you possibly is that you're saying you talk about all these cities across the United States that did it, which is great. But how many of those cities have got their own park and recreation district or parks district versus versus one that is independent autonomous with the city itself? I'd like to know whose responsibility or where does that fall under? Where it should it not be more recreational or are these bikes supposed to be recreational or they're just supposed to be for utilitarian? I just have a ton of questions before I'm on board. I mean, I, I don't like dislike it, but I think there's enough to where I've got some responsibilities that I need to make myself comfortable with in regards to some of these questions before I could sign on.
Well, I think maybe that's the question that we want, we want to ask before these guys dive back into this, right? Is that if you read, if you read the packet, every, like, the going forward here is giving direction to build an actual operating plan and put some of the details together and come back and have a conversation about it. And if if people are comfortable there, then I think that's, that's the direction we, we need to give them is let the transportation specialists at, at AlCOG put together some of these details and have a more detailed conversation about where's the funding coming from, where's the locations going to be at, how long, what's, what are the success measures, et cetera, et cetera. That way we can look at the, look at the whole packet. Are people comfortable with that approach, Cory?
I am. Yes. And again, I am overall supportive of it. I just think we have to come at it from a Springfield lens and not just a, you know, sort of taking on what has worked in Eugene or someplace else. It's just, that's how I would like to look at it moving forward.
And I think, so what I hear from, from a direction perspective is, right, there's a clear understanding that, you know, to try to do it more as a pilot, you know, clearly in Western Springfield where the city naturally connects to Eugene and not necessarily to try to put, put this in all of Springfield at the same time. And that what we would want to see is some, some clarity around sources of funding, right? Which I think have been, been, been identified and then timeline, success measures. And probably some, some clarity around how we're going to cite the, where we would cite, actually cite the bikes, right? So it's not enough just to say it's going to be at city hall, but hey, here's some of the factors when we're looking for the actual location. Leonard.
I, I think there's some wisdom in being selective about where the sites are for the bikes. I, I'm comfortable with going forward with 100, though. I mean, I think that it's a, it's a program that we should be encouraging and I'm ready to, AlCOG meets about every three months and I'm, I'm comfortable with just going forward with this right now.
So just to be clear, right, going forward is putting together the operating plan and coming back and talking about it?
Right.
Okay. Joe.
Yeah, if we can throw, throw in some sort of work or some justification as to the number instead of being random and instead of being just some of these thought process and, and that's fine. If someone wants to say, okay, based, based on my experience on this per, you know, per 100,000, per 10,000 residents, this has been a successful number. And we've had use of most all those bikes and there's still been some in reserve as opposed to if you go to San Diego, you'll see their bikes all over the place and all over all their sidewalks to enough to where it's almost like you're tripping over them. So they got so many bikes in there that it's just ridiculous. So, you know, again, I don't want, you know, and Cory has said it and then I'll repeat it is that we, I want to look through this as how Springfield would do it. I don't want us to be East Eugene. I want us to be Springfield and I want us to be, go through this systematically. And where I can tell my taxpayers, people that voted for me are saying, yeah, we've vetted this like crazy. And there's just, it just makes it to where it's just no way we could say no. That's where I want to be. Just get me to point of where it'd be foolish for me to say no. And I'm okay with that. So I think if we can get some of those answers back and, and, and just like what the mayor was saying is, is I'm fine with looking at it. I'm not, I'm not at a dead stop. No.
Steve. It's interesting talking about sites. Sites will self-select. We're going to set them up out there. Some are going to work fine, some aren't. There's going to be places where a natural site should be and be moved there and it'll just take care of itself.
Okay, anybody else? Emma, do you have enough direction here?
This has been really helpful. I appreciate the direction to, you know, work with the transportation options specialist position. It'll be filled by Kelsey Moore in April. That is the individual who's in that position, housed at AlCOG, working in Springfield, not a Eugene person. And then we'll also look at the grant funding, start getting into more of the details. One thing that I think was really incredibly helpful for launching Eugene's system and has been done in multiple other communities is asking community members where they'd like to see hubs actually located. And that kind of resonates with what Counselor Rodley was saying around outreach. So I just would love a little bit of clarification on whether you'd also like us to get to that stage in the process where we're soliciting input from community members saying we're, we're pursuing this, we're moving in this direction. What would you like to see? How do you want to see this rolled out in a Springfield way with the Springfield lens?
Joe.
Thank you, Sean. Emma, no, I appreciate that and I think that would be a somewhere to get to, yes. I, one of the, one of the things I definitely want to get answered to, and I, and you bounced around a little bit as far as the local bicycle shop owners. I want to hear a deadpan, they support it or not? Not as far as they support bicycling world and they support bicyclists. Well, of course they do. They have shops. But I want to know if they are told, okay, we're looking at putting 100 bikes within a few blocks of you and that, that you're okay with that. And that, do you see that as an issue? And, and I don't, I want to get their blessings. Okay, I don't want to fight business owners, especially, like you said, two have closed down. I don't want to be any part of, of the survivorship of any others that, that we can make or break potentially with something like this. I don't know. But I would love to be able to get their backing, their support and some outreach, exactly what Counselor Rodley was talking about, some, some actual feedback from, from people that are not, that are not BPAC. I mean, let's, let's face it, BPAC members are bicyclists and that's fine. They're, they're, they're experts in their field. But, but we have taxpayers and we have other people that may be impacted that don't necessarily like bicyclists on their streets, even though there should be. But to get our opinions that way, we can say, hey, we talked to folks, we talked, people are against it. We argued against this, we fought for this. And we're moving forward. So I can tell you, once you get me on board, you, you'll have me on board for sure. So try to get me there. Okay.
And Emma, if we could provide some, some feedback to AlCOG, to Kelsey Moore and to have her just sort of stop by on one of the times when we're taking public comment and introduce herself. I, I don't know that we've met, like, I'm looking around and I don't think anybody's met her yet, even though she's brand new, will, will be brand new in April. I think that would help connect some of the dots. All right, I think we are good. We are going to adjourn. We're going to be back in this room at 6:30 on a different meeting link. We are going to be in executive session at 6:30. So I'm going to adjourn us until then. We are adjourned. Thank you.